Are we set? Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, to the Bloomington City Council meeting on Monday, September 22nd. If you please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and then a moment of silence, please. Rick, would you please call the roll?
Yes, sorry, bear with me. The system is moving a smidge slow. Got tired from township. Okay, here we go. Councilmember Kearns, here. Councilmember Mosley.
Here.
Councilmember Montney.
Here.
Councilmember Danenberger.
Here.
Councilmember Strazza.
Here.
Councilmember Hendricks.
Here.
Councilmember Ward.
Here.
Councilmember Lee is absent. Councilmember Scott.
Here.
Mayor Brady.
Here.
IT, do we have Councilmember Lee remote? Okay, Mayor, Councilmember Lee is traveling for work, so we need to have a motion to allow him to attend remotely.
I'll move that we allow Councilmember Lee to attend remotely.
Motion by Member Ward.
I'll second.
Second, Member Hendricks. Go ahead and vote.
Okay, no needs to announce. Councilmember Lee, are you there?
We have Member Lee. Okay, maybe we can reestablish contact here shortly. We'll move forward and then come back and check as we move to the regular agenda for this evening. Madam Clerk, are there recognitions or proclamations we need at this time?
Yes, we've got 5A, which is Mayor proclamation, the designation of September 23rd, 2025, as Illinois Wesleyan University Day.
Thank you. Smill, if you'd like to stand to the podium, ladies and gentlemen, if you would allow me to read the following proclamation, whereas Illinois Wesleyan University, founded in 1850, celebrates its 150th anniversary, 2025, marking nearly two centuries of unwavering dedication to the pursuit of academic excellence and the advancement of the liberal arts and sciences. Illinois Wesleyan University has served as a vital educational, cultural, and economic cornerstone of the city of Bloomington, shaping generations of scholars through a rigorous student-centered curriculum and a steadfast commitment to civic engagement. Illinois Wesleyan University is becoming the nation's leader in entrepreneurial liberal arts education, building on its rich traditions while pioneering innovative programs that prepare students to join the workforce in a rapidly changing world. The city of Bloomington recognizes and celebrates Illinois Wesleyan University's longstanding role in enhancing the quality of life for its residents through cultural programs, educational outreach, public service, and mutually beneficial partnerships. In celebration of the 175th anniversary of Illinois Wesleyan University, which continues to inspire excellence, foster innovation, and shape the future of higher education in our city and beyond, therefore, I, Mayor Dan Brady, do hereby proclaim Tuesday, September 23rd, 2025, officially tomorrow, as Illinois Wesleyan University in the city of Bloomington, and urge all citizens to join in recognizing the remarkable legacy, contributions, and continuing impact of Illinois Wesleyan University on our community, throughout our state, and our nation. Mr. Van Mullen from Illinois Wesleyan University, if you would please, sir.
Sure. Thank you, Mayor Brady. On behalf of Illinois Wesleyan University, we are deeply honored by the city's proclamation recognizing our 175th anniversary. We thank the city for being a valued partner and advocate throughout our long history and look forward to continuing our work together for many more years to come. Thank you.
Thank you very much. If you'd come forth to receive the proclamation, ladies and gentlemen, earlier today, we had the proclamation presented at Illinois Wesleyan University at the Kinder Brothers Speaking Series at Illinois Wesleyan. So congratulations to all of Illinois Wesleyan University. And speaking of Illinois Wesleyan University, Member Ward would like to acknowledge some possible other participants from Illinois Wesleyan University here tonight.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor, for a chance to recognize Illinois Wesleyan as not only a gem of Bloomington in general, but a gem of Ward Seven, which I represent. And I'm really thrilled to congratulate Illinois Wesleyan as a whole, but I believe I have it on good authority that there might be some Illinois Wesleyan students here. Not to put anybody on the spot, but if you wanted to wave, if you're an Illinois Wesleyan student or an alum, you're welcome to do that.
Stand up. Even better.
I didn't put you on the spot. Thank you. Thank you for what you contribute to our community. As the mayor mentioned, you are quite involved in the community. The civic engagement is really tops. We have Illinois Wesleyan students who have started nonprofits, like the Tool Library. We have Illinois Wesleyan students who serve on boards and commissions. You contribute to the community in more ways than you maybe even realize yet. So, thank you.
Thank you, and thank you for being here tonight. Madam Clerk, do we have public comment?
We have one more item under recognition.
I'm sorry?
And that is to recognize your recent appointments and reappointments.
Okay. And we have those names of, here are Melissa Woods, the Zoning Board of Appeals, Maureen Clancy from the Citizens Beautification Committee, and also, well, I don't think that person is going to be present, but those individuals, if you please stand so we could give you a round of applause and appreciation for serving on committees. Thank you very, very much. Thank you all. Next?
Next, we have public comment. So we had one person provide email public comment, which was forwarded to council this morning. Name was Michael Mintz. Michael Hintz, I apologize. And then we do have four individuals registered for in-person. Mayor, if you'd like to read your statement.
I'm sorry?
If you'd like to read your statement of public comment.
Sure. Individuals wishing to provide public comment can do so with mutual respect. Individuals wishing to provide public comment can do so with mutual respect. It is also an opportunity for the city council to listen and to hear diverse points of view to maximize the impact of public comment and show respect for the expression of all viewpoints. Speakers should maintain stability and respect required to give their, or not required to give their addresses. Each speaker is given the floor for three minutes, and the council does not respond or engage in debate. Any speaker that engages in threatening or disorderly behavior will be deemed out of order and their time will be revoked. If you'd call the first speaker.
First up, we have Brian Dixon.
Good deal. Thank you so much for taking the time and good afternoon and good evening to everybody here. My name is Brian Dixon. I'm the owner of Six Strings Club in downtown Bloomington. It's a pleasure to be able to speak for you guys today. There's two items on the agenda today that concern us greatly in the downtown bar and restaurant community, and that's the expansion of gambling licenses, as well as the provisions for potential tax sharing for those that are affected by the downtown-for-everyone construction that has been going on recently. So with respect to public gambling, I'm sorry, with gambling license expansion, you know, the plan, I applaud you guys for tackling this very, very difficult and kind of intractable issue. The plan was always maybe not to expand gambling, but to level the playing field between those who have licenses and those who don't, and those who do not have a provision to obtain a license due to an artificial cap placed on the license issuance, which kind of commoditizes the license when you think about it, because it gains a value outside of the sphere of the city's areas of influence in which those licenses become very, very sought after. So an expansion of that certainly takes that off the playing field, and I think that's a very, very important thing for us to keep in the back of our minds as we talk about how we license those things, how they impact the community, and how they impact the individual businesses. Certainly relief for those who have been on the waiting list for a long time is job number one. I think an excellent end goal as a plan would be the elimination of the license cap long-term with the enforcement of the 50-50 rule with maybe a little more teeth attached to it, or some sort of a review process, because the end goal, as I always understood it, was not to have gambling parlors in the city of Bloomington. And I feel that the 50-50 rule is a very effective way of tackling a problem like that without creating an uncompetitive environment, because if, you know, everybody's taken care of today, and Bloomington Normal grows and we add more drinking establishments and restaurants, we will run into this problem again with a cap that's in place. So I encourage you to keep that in your mind as we continue our discussions about this. With respect to tax sharing, the construction downtown has been disruptive. It has been difficult. Some of my neighbors and close confidants have seen some pretty impactful reductions in their day-to-day sales. And any sort of relief that you guys would think appropriate, I think, is warranted, is necessary, and I think moving forward is going to make the impact of this thing a little easier to bear, because it has become a significant amount of burden. And I've even had to, you know, even at nighttime, add a lot of head counts and have extra people on staff merely just to handle some of the people flows, the vehicle flows, the way vehicle for hires interact with downtown, getting people in and out safely. It has been burdensome, and I thank you for considering a measure like this to help us out.
Thank you. Next, please.
Next up, we have Amy Endicott.
Mayor, councilmembers, and city leaders, my name is Amy Endicott, and I serve as the Managing Director of Care for Victims. Tonight, we want to extend our appreciation of the recent changes implemented as a result of our assessment and meetings with the city of Bloomington. Mayor, thank you again for meeting with us to learn more about our organization, our work, and for your support. We also thank city leaders for your updates on our assessment recommendations. Our assessment was focused on victims' rights, community resources, transparency and accountability information being made available to the public. In total, we had approximately 106 findings and 108 recommendations. We're pleased to see several of our Bloomington Police recommendations now implemented or in progress. A few of these include: the outdated Victims Resource flyer handed out at the police lobby has now been updated. QR codes are now available at the police lobby linking to victims' rights information. A number of changes have been made to the police website, including a new victim information and resource section has been added. A separate community resource section has also been added. A link to the state sexual offender registry will be added. You've added jurisdiction and what to expect when filing a police report, information under police reports. You've added FOIA information to the records and evidence release section, and you've updated the citizen complaint information to include appealing a decision section and referencing to the PSCRB. We also want to thank Sergeant Kyle Nowers for helping us early on in this effort and immediately working with his team to update the victim resource flyer and explore options to automate this information on the police website. This is exactly the type of collaboration we were hoping for to quickly address issues. We thank you again for your ongoing service and dedication to our community. While our work continues to address even larger issues still present, the changes implemented here are a great start to addressing needs of victims in our community. We hope the city of Bloomington and Police Department will share this new information through campaigns to educate the community on victims' rights, what to expect when filing a police report, expectations of working with the justice system, and how to enforce your rights should they be violated. Additionally, we'll be presenting this Wednesday at 6:00 PM in the same room during the Public Safety Community Relations Board meeting and warmly invite everyone to attend. We'll share more about our organization and findings and recommendations related to the PSCRB. The meetings will contribute to broader community discussions on transparency and accountability within law enforcement, the justice system, and local government. We appreciate your time and attention to these important issues that affect nearly every member and constituent within our community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up, we have Gary Lambert.
Good evening. My name is Gary Lambert. I live in the 3,000 block of East Oakland Avenue. I've read recently of the community at the east end of Oakland is going to be getting city sewer, city water. Very glad for them. The area where I live, between, I believe, Hershey Avenue and Waterford Estates, has no city sewer either. I don't understand that. I inquired about it once, and they said that there was no sewer line down Oakland Avenue. Now, that 10, 15, 20 houses, whatever it is, is surrounded by residential areas. They all have public facilities. Something to think about. If you get an extremity on the east end of Oakland, that you've got a major section of very nice houses without city sewer. I was driving in tonight, came down Washington, East Washington, and there's an area there where we've got some very nice bike lanes. I suggest that you may want to rename those to the citizen brush disposal area. We went to a lot of public comment, expense, time to get those bike lanes established, yet a few people feel it's their right to have large piles of brush, completely obstructing the bike lanes. Rules without enforcement are worthless. Thank you.
Thank you. Other speakers?
Last, we have Misty Metros.
Thank you.
Hello.
Hello. My name is Misty Metros, and I am here.
If you can move just a little closer to the microphone, we can hear better.
I'm here because of comments I read tonight in an article about your sales tax, for the 1% sales tax to keep it going. And quite honestly, the comments were very dismissive, very demeaning. To say that the 1% increase is pretty much needed for services, for capital improvements, but it's basically okay as long as it's not affecting people on WIC or SNAP. So it's dismissive to anybody else who's not receiving assistance, and that is wrong. Just because somebody is not on government assistance does not mean they are not already struggling with the amount of taxes that we have in the state, in the county, and in the city. We already have gas taxes that went up, which was supposed to fund the roads, but now you're saying the sales tax now is increased to keep that 1% is also going to go for the roads, for the transportation. Well, then where's the money going if that was what it was supposed to be with the gas tax already in place that was increased several years back? And not to mention the sales tax already on top of the gas taxes. Not everybody can afford all of this, and it is very much burdensome in this state. So please reconsider. Think about those who are not on the government assistance who are struggling, especially with the property taxes that are in place currently now, and there is no reprieve. At some point, people in your positions, in county positions and the state, need to acknowledge the burdens that all of these taxes are putting on people. There needs to be reprieve. There needs to be a relief, and not just continuously going and going with tax upon tax upon tax, increase upon increase upon increase. And it would be nice if somebody would not have the mentality, who's in a government position, to say, well, these people are exempt. As long as it's not affecting them, it's okay. The rest of you, big deal. Deal with it. Thank you.
Thank you. Other speakers?
That's all we have.
Thank. Are there members that have a question or need something that be polled from the consent agenda?
With respect, I would like to poll 7M.
Okay. Anyone else? Go ahead, then.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda with the exception of item M.
Second. Second. Thank you.
Sorry, who seconded? Thank you.
Well, go ahead and vote.
Councilmember Lee? Councilmember Lee, are you still with us? Phil? Yeah? Councilmember Lee, if you're talking, you are muted, and we need to know how you'd like to vote.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Hello? Okay. Yes, I will vote yes.
Thank you. Motion carried. No needs to announce.
Okay. Take the record and we move on to the next item. Do you have a question, I believe?
Yes, yes.
Member on 7M?
The agenda creators would like to expand on the reasoning behind 7M.
Sure. What I thought would be helpful is that the members of the body would go first when it comes to public comments, representing all the different wards that they do, that we hear from projects, events, things going on in their district, their ward, and I felt that it would be nice to have that courtesy extended to members of the council to go first. I'm sorry?
Got it.
There any questions? Okay. We make a motion to?
I'll make a motion to approve item M.
Okay.
Second?
Motion made by Member Montney, seconded by Member Danenberger. We can go ahead and vote.
Councilmember Lee, how do you vote?
I'll vote yes.
Thank you. Motion carried. We have one need to announce, and that's Councilmember Scott.
Thank you. We'll now move on to the, unless there's any other questions or comments, under consent, we'll move on to the regular agenda. And our first item of the regular agenda this evening is going to be explained by our city manager, Jeff Jurgens.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. We have a brief presentation tonight to go over exactly what this is and how we got there. If you go to the next slide. Just a quick reminder, so the General Assembly in 2024, and it was signed into law on August 5th, approved a law that repealed the municipal 1% grocery tax effective January 1, 2026. However, when they repealed it at the state level, they allowed the local municipalities to go ahead and keep it in place. And so that's what we are considering tonight. Next slide, please. Couple of things that I really want to highlight and stress. Number one, this is not a new tax. It is the continuation of a 1% tax on groceries, and I know with 1%, it's pretty easy to do the calculations, but for example, if you spend $50 on groceries, it's a 50 cent tax. If you spend $100, it's a dollar. If you spend $200, it's $200. And there are exemptions, so if you are using certain government benefits, you are not subject to the tax. Again, just stressing, this is not a new tax. This would be a continuation. Next slide. So the tax, and I get, nobody likes taxes, and any tax, you know, you could argue is too much. But when you go from a $50 bag of groceries to getting 50 cents, you know, it's little increments like that, but it adds up a lot and is extremely significant to the city of Bloomington. It's difficult to project this tax because it's not broken down by the state, but the best we can estimate from our finance department is we expect this to be about a $3 million hit to the city budget if we do not keep this tax. So the impact is large. Next slide. And with that, the stakes, it being $3 million, the stakes are very high for the city on this. In February of 2025, we projected about a $7.25 million deficit. This deficit, we're very fortunate, is going to be offset, a lot of it, we predict, by some changes in the sales tax, not related to the grocery tax, but changes related to internet sales. So we're going to make up some ground on the deficit, along with some other things we're doing that we'll talk about in a minute. Again, if the grocery tax is kept in place, you know, that cuts that deficit by another $3 million. So if we do not keep the grocery tax, the 1% grocery tax, we are projecting now, and this again is based on preliminary projections, that we will still have about a $1.5 million deficit. If we keep the grocery tax in place, we project that we will not only not have a deficit, but we could potentially be in a position to move forward on some capital projects that we've been talking about for a number of years. So we would argue as staff, the stakes are very high when it comes to this tax. Next slide. Again, why this matters, without it, we remain in a significant deficit. We would have to look at, you know, obviously continued cuts and different ways to address that deficit, and we would not be in a position to move forward on some of the projects we're going to talk about. Next slide. I think it's also important to point out that even if we keep the 1% grocery tax. I think it's also important to point out that even if we keep the 1% grocery tax, staff, and I know this council is committed to fiscal discipline. In the last fiscal year, we engaged in significant reductions. We cut 2.45 million from the budget from different operational savings, cutting seasonal staff, reducing purchase services, repairs, trainings, and other supplies. We deferred equipment and capital purchases in the amount of $3.9 million, and we reduced FTEs. So far, since the last fiscal year budget, we've cut a total of 12 FTEs, full-time employees through attrition, and we're working on cutting another eight FTEs through attrition this fiscal year. So we're reducing positions to meet the challenges of the budget and to re-prioritize to the extent we can. The core priorities like public safety, infrastructure, and essential services. And again, we also made other adjustments and savings to the tune of about a quarter million dollars in this last budget. Next slide. Want to go over a couple of our capital projects that are, have been priorities of the council and that are, I would argue, really true needs of this community. One is the Public Works Campus relocation. We purchased the Owens Nursery. We're engaging in a study for planning to see what we need to do to that campus so that we can relocate our Public Works Campus there, and also our Fleet Facility, which is also, you know, one of the worst facilities we have, but we have plans to relocate that to the Public Works Campus. One of the reasons that project is so critical is because we have to relocate that, not only because there are needs for the Public Works Campus. It is too small. It is not serving our needs. It is not protecting our equipment that we have millions invested in. Not only do we need to relocate that just on its own merit, we have to do that so that we can move forward with the East Street Basin, which is going to address flooding in a core area of our city. We also have needs for public safety facilities, a new fire station that we've talked about to help reduce response times, and also police space needs. We have identified through recent studies, a need to increase that space by about 25,000 to 50,000 square feet. So definitely needs there. We also are going to have some additional needs regarding downtown parking. We have truly reduced what at one point, you know, we were looking at having to spend, you know, 12-plus million dollars to address those parking needs. We're going to be substantially under that at the end of the day, but we're still going to need to invest a little bit of money for our downtown parking needs. And then finally, our Old City Hall. Maybe it becomes part of the answer for some of the police space, but that facility needs to be upgraded with regards to ADA, ventilation, those types of things. So we have a long list of capital project needs. Next slide. Just, you know, in full transparency, want to go over some of the pros and cons of maintaining this tax. Some of the cons is there could be a perception that it puts us at a competitive disadvantage. If we have the 1% grocery tax and nobody else does, you know, the thought that maybe people might not shop here. In reality, our Twin City, the town of Normal, voted to keep this tax long ago, and we are projecting that nearly 600 other Illinois municipalities have already adopted it. Originally, we thought it was actually over 600, but there, some of the communities are indifferent in more than one county. So we went back and redid the numbers, and we think it's actually about 593 communities so far. But by the time the deadline rolls around, the end of this month, we believe it'll be well over 600. Another con is obviously there's a cost to this tax. Yes, it's 1%, but there is a cost. Based on, and you could probably try and project this a number of different ways, we looked at, you know, the average household in Bloomington being about 2.3 people. If they spend about $9,400 on groceries a year, that breaks down to about $7.90 a month. So certainly there is a cost to this, but we will also argue that there are some benefits to it as well. And then finally, the con that's most often cited with this is that it's regressive in nature. And there's, you know, there's truly no argument in that. If you make more money, 1% taxes is not as impactful to you if you make a lot less money. And while we did try and point out that there are programs that this does not apply to, you know, the point in public comment is well taken. If you fall through the cracks and you're not eligible for SNAP or WIC benefits, you know, this is going to be an impact to you. But if you go to the next slide, you know, one of the things we would argue is by keeping this tax and being able to keep some of the services, we as staff believe we could argue that the benefits certainly outweigh the cons to that. So some of the pros in terms of keeping it, again, this is not a new tax, that it is a low rate, 1% compared to the cost and the, compared to the benefit, that there are some exemptions for those of the lowest income, including for SNAP and WIC households. There is also a, certainly a large benefit, that this is not just borne by the residents of the city of Bloomington, that this tax is paid by visitors that are coming from outside the city that are paying this tax, and then that is going to help those within the city as well. And finally, it's a stable revenue source that will help us with our deficit. Next slide. Just what some others are saying, there was an article from the U of I from their Institute of Government and Public Affairs, kind of at a high level, said the cost to the households, the savings there is modest, but the loss to the municipalities is consequential. And again, we believe that well over 600 municipalities by the end of October will have adopted and kept this tax in place, meaning there will not be any disadvantage to the city of Bloomington. Rather, we'll be in line with many other communities. And the next slide. Kind of just highlighting the choice between us. Again, not to be too repetitive, but we keep the tax. That means we maintain approximately 3 million in revenue. We close the deficit. We create a path forward to fund critical projects. We protect services, and we allow nonresidents to help fund city services. If we allow the tax to lapse, we will face ongoing deficits. We will have to look and consider deeper cuts. We will lack the financial capacity to address major projects, and we will, but we will provide some savings for those who buy groceries within the city. Final slide. Staff recommendation is to approve the ordinance and maintain the 1% grocery tax. Certainly, I don't like to sit up here and recommend that we keep any tax or that we, you know, have, you know, I understand taxes are difficult in general, but from our vantage point, this is not just a city manager viewpoint. You know, this is a consensus among senior leadership, the finance department. We truly believe that keeping this tax in place is critical and will provide us with the best fighting chance to continue to move different projects forward at as low as a cost possible to the city residents. And with that, happy to answer any questions. And I've asked Finance Director Scott Rathbun to sit up here and help as well. If there are questions, he can answer.
Thank you. Member Strazin.
I think I put my light on first.
Oh, I'm sorry. All right. Be happy. Go right ahead. Member Ward, I didn't see your light.
Thank you. So I understand that there is room for discussion after a motion is made. And so given that, I would like to move that we not approve this.
I'll second.
Second.
Shiva beat me.
There's been a motion made and seconded on the floor. Are there other comments?
Before we vote, I'd love to make some comments. Yeah.
I was just asking that.
Yeah, thank you. So the reason I'm moving that we not approve this tax, and it is a tax, it's a continuation of a tax, but that tax is due to expire. So it's, I think it's a little bit disingenuous to say it's not a new tax. It would be a new tax if it continued. The primary reason that I'm moving that we not move forward with this tax is because it would provide a burden on people who are already suffering. And it would not only provide a burden on people who are already suffering, but it would provide a burden on those least able to accommodate that burden, carry that burden. There are those who are on fixed incomes. There are the working poor. We just had a wonderful proclamation proclaiming the wonderful gem of a university that we have in this community. There are university students who can't afford to buy food in our community, who go to food pantries to feed themselves. And this is another burden on them. It's been said, it's only $2, it's only $2 on 200. I don't know how many people can afford to drop $200 a pop on a grocery bill, but that catches my attention when I go to the grocery store. And $2, there was a time in my life, thankfully it's not, but the, and I can't speak for any other council members, but there was a time in my life where $2 meant the difference between walking to work or riding the subway to work at the time, or the bus. It meant whether I was going to eat lunch or ride to work. For many people in our community, that's a bus fare. It's school supplies for their kids. That's $7.90. We're not talking about buying Starbucks here. We're talking about buying school supplies. You can buy a couple of pairs of mittens at the dollar store for $2. That's relevant to people. And whether they're on WIC or SNAP or not, or as our public speaker eloquently said, whether they fall through the cracks on that or not, it matters to them, even though those of us sitting here may not find $2 or $7.90 to be a big deal. Apparently, it was a big deal when we did the right thing earlier this year and held the line on property taxes. People stood up at public comment and went and raised with us that those $8 a month, or whatever it was, on property taxes that they would be paying would be a travesty. And this is on people who can't afford it. If a person is a millionaire or they make minimum wage, it still affects them the same amount, except it's not the same impact. We need to find the money elsewhere. In just a couple of hours of emails back and forth with city staff, I came up with $810,000 in just a couple of emails, two or three email exchanges. We're about to vote on a video gaming increase, raise that cap. It's likely to pass. That alone, those 15 more video games licenses will contribute $330,000 to this community. There's a video gaming operation at the QuickTrip on West Market Street in Ward 7 that hasn't even come online yet. So add another $22,000 to that. If we were to have an increase in some of the taxes that are indeed luxury taxes, that also would bring hundreds of thousands of dollars to our community, and it wouldn't necessarily affect Bloomingtonians or Normalites or even McLean County people. A 1% increase in the hotel motel tax, for example, would bring in $383,000 a year. If we increased packaged liquor, that would bring in $15,000. Okay? That's a luxury. It's not like buying milk for your kid. If we were to increase by 1% the restaurant food and drink tax, that'd be another $60,000. Maybe my math is low on that. I'm thinking it's, I'm low, so it would even be more. And that's, please, fix my math on this. So we're talking close to $1 million, if not more, and I would love it if the finance director would correct my math on that. There's money there that can come from other places without going to this kind of regressive tax that's really going to be a burden on the people who can least afford it. And so I implore my fellow council members to rethink this and have a heart for people.
Thank you. Member Mosley?
Yeah, I just want to add, I know we went right to a motion, but I did want to, and I'm going to address this motion that's on the floor first with my comments, because I think what we're talking about disingenuous, we're disingenuous because now we can't ask the city manager and our finance director about the motion, the recommendation that they put forward until we get through this. And so I'm just reserved from that. And then the second piece is?
Sorry, that's a, I need to ask a point of order. That, I don't believe that's true. I asked the mayor ahead of time if we could have discussion.
Well, your light was on first, and he asked if we had questions specific to him that we could address. Yes, now we're forced to just address this motion that's on the floor. And so, yes, we hopefully can come back and address that. But I do want to address the motion from my perspective. And my perspective is, yes, we can add and look at some of those same video gaming and other things, which I hope we will continue to look at these things. And so from a tax perspective, and this is a question that I actually have for you, Finance Director, is do we know that from a gaming structure, if we even approve that other ordinance that we're going to be in front of us, that that's going to increase the number of people that are going to be gaming, or if it just increases the pool of gaming systems that are available? Correct?
Yeah, that's a good question. I mean, you don't know if by increasing like number of cannabis locations, et cetera, if you cannibalize existing business operations from other entities. You don't know. So the numbers we provided, I provided today, Councilmember Ward, were really just an average. If you take the total that we make on video gaming divided by the number of licenses, and then multiply that times the new ones, that's the number that was referenced previously.
And then my other question, I guess, is from a municipality, do we have the ability to raise prices on liquors and things like that, or liquor tax, or is that going to be regulated by the state?
We have a local packaged liquor tax that we do have the authority to raise.
Okay. Thank you.
Other members with questions, comments? Member Motney?
No, I appreciate Councilmember Ward's comments. I agree with them. That's, those are the reasons that the state of Illinois determined it was appropriate to remove this tax. I also think, you know, looking back, we've drawn so much from our reserves for things that we want to do. I feel that we have a spending problem that is more significant than our revenue problem at this point. I'd also like to just make the comment that if the estimate is $3 million revenue that would be generated for the city through this tax, that means $3 million of revenue that would be taken out of the usable income of the people who are buying those products. Thank you.
Other members?
Yeah.
Member Currents?
Yeah, I guess I just have a quick question, thinking about the suggestions that Councilmember Ward made, and maybe help me understand if those were any that went through, you know, like leadership's thoughts of like, if not this, where could we find a replacement? And why then, I guess, help me understand why this seems like the route that you're suggesting and that you think is the best choice for us at this time?
Sure. So I'll try to address that. A couple of things. One, you know, there's no guarantee that the, as the Finance Director said, that we're going to see more revenue from, you know, expanding the video gaming licenses. We could see, you know, just it shifting around. You know, we don't know what that's going to look like. The other, you know, we can only go up so high on the motel tax, or we're going to price ourselves out of the market, and we don't know what the impact of us going up on that's going to be either. But again, that's only get us, what, $300,000 or $400,000? And, you know, packaged liquor was only going to get us, you know, so much money. And when you start to tax yourself out of those markets, and we were really, you know, we're really far from the $3 million. And so remember, keeping this tax and keeping that $3 million, you know, that's not solving all of our problems. That's helping us with the deficit. That's helping position ourselves in a way that we can move forward on maybe one of the capital projects. But we still have a lot of other capital projects we've got to figure out how to do. And again, it's not to say that we're, you know, part of that process isn't us cutting back on things or reducing things. I, you know, based on the council and previous discussions, I assume that's going to continue to be part of the direction. But if we want to move forward on some of these projects, we're going to have to have a significant amount of revenue to do that. And to lose $3 million is going to certainly have a negative impact on that. So you could incrementally get there on a couple of these items, but it's not going to, you know, it's not going to get us all the way there. And Finance Director, anything to add to that?
I will comment to Councilmember Ward's math on food and beverage. So, I mean, if we're discussing alternatives, I mean, food and beverage is a 2% tax, and that generates $6 million annually. So each 1% then generates $3 million.
Oh, so if we were to, oh, sorry. So, wait, each 1% would generate $3 million. So if we were to in- So if we were to increase that tax by one percent to to three percent, we would have the three million dollars?
All, yeah, with all my other caveats, you know, all things being held equal, not pricing ourselves out, driving people to other locations, that kind of thing.
What about packaged liquor?
That one's, yeah, that's that number was, I think, that you referenced. That's that's pretty minimal. I don't have the number in the top of my head right now.
But three million dollars for food and drink? Yeah.
In general, to answer other questions, you know, the retention of this, and and I'll just I'll just comment about some of the other fiscal things we've been issues we've talked discussed over the last couple of years in light of the levy and things of that nature, you know, that that's why this retention of this tax has an importance to staff related to kind of the unknown. This this is a continuation of a revenue stream. That's more reliable than a potential revenue stream, I guess.
May I ask one more question? And that is, could you just confirm the the graph that you showed? Maybe it was it was actually the city manager who who provided me with the graph earlier. But it showed how much revenues from video gaming have increased since the beginning. When we started video gaming, what, in 2012? That was zero, and we're at, what now?
One point three million.
Okay, and since 2020, so the last five years since the pandemic, which was when there was a dip. But up until then, it was a steady increase. And since the pandemic, it's doubled. So I think the argument that that we can't predict whether we're gonna be able to, you know, get more revenues from video gaming, it doesn't fly with me.
Other comments? Member Mosley?
Yeah, I'm just, I guess I'm gonna make a motion if we can extend this discussion for at least five minutes.
Second. Motion made by Member Mosley, seconded by Member Strazza. Madam Clerk? Voice vote?
Yeah, all in favor? Oh, I guess we can't do all in favor. Councilmember Kern? I can do a voice. Okay, all in favor?
All in favor.
I. Councilmember Lee? Councilmember Lee, how do you vote?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. Member Mosley?
Yeah, I guess I I just want to make one additional question for the Finance Director is similar to, as you mentioned with the grocery, I mean, with the food and beverage increase. Could you tell me, do we know if we could potentially price ourselves out from that? For example, if you we increase that tax here, why would I not just take a little easy drive over to Peoria to go to Biagis versus the Biagis here? Would there be impact there potentially? Does that just mean that we're gonna automatically increase that revenue?
Uh, no, it does not mean we'll automatically increase the revenue. So I'm just extrapolating out given the existing volume. So we could, there could be an impact.
Okay, that's all I have.
Any other members? Discussion. I'm Strazza.
Yes. I understand we're looking quickly to do cost savings right now, today. A lot of what we're showing here and the the numbers that were given beforehand to Councilmember Ward. Unfortunately, those are very speculative numbers. We can extrapolate and do percentages and all that. I'm well aware of finances and understand how that works. And the reality is, we are guessing on a lot of things. We're not necessarily guessing on the grocery tax at this moment in time. It has a huge impact, yes, it does, not just for the city, for the people that live in the city, yes. But to, at this moment in time, base a vote on what we think we might be making off of gaming, what we think we might make off liquor sales, that isn't proven, that there's no proof in that. All there is is a number that was generated based off of a historical data that doesn't have history today. It has history in the back behind us. So what are we looking at today? So that's my concern is, if we move forward with that idea, I would like to say yes with Member Ward on the idea, let's look at this further in a future date, not today. But we do need to be looking at what we're doing with the money that we are entrusted to to make decisions on roads, on people's livelihoods, their taxes and everything. I want to make sure we're really doing this without a a quick decision on something like this.
Member Scott?
Yes, thank you. Just to echo those, I'm I I too encourage the idea of creative examinations for for revenue sources that aren't have have less cons attached them. I am uncomfortable about doing it at the eleventh hour, but would absolutely be willing to to say bring something up later if we find other sources of revenue that are consistent and that we we trust. I am uncomfortable too about the idea of reducing revenue and then cutting services that would then help the very people that we are trying to help by cutting this revenue. And then lastly, I want to say that I I got a chance to go out in Ward Nine this weekend and talk to everybody. Said, hey, this is this is on the agenda. What do you think? And all of them said, just keep it. Just make sure that we are continuously fiscally responsible. So I appreciate the the reports about, these are the cuts that we've made, this is what we've got continuously, and this is where this money is going. Thank you.
Member Ward to close?
Yes, just one one comment and one question. The question first is, is the grocery tax projection based on history? Is, I mean, there's not like a requirement that our our community members buy a certain amount of groceries every year, right?
Well, it it is based on history, the the projection. And I, and this is just speculative, but I I would also suggest that it's probably more reliable revenue source than than other sales taxes. And in other words, people probably buy the same amount of groceries from year to year versus if there's economic downturns.
And then the comment is that if if somebody's gonna drive all the way over to Peoria to save a dollar on a hundred dollar restaurant bill, I I stand down.
Thank you. We have a motion on the floor. That motion's been seconded. Madam Clerk, if you would ask for the vote?
So point of, can I clarify?
I'm sorry?
Yeah, it this is a vote. So a no says, a no says we do not not accept.
Just to, just
Go ahead.
To clarify, my intent of my motion was that we vote no on the count or on city staff's proposal. And
So a yes is no, in this case?
Correct.
Can I, can I help, Mayor? Maybe. Maybe you don't need it.
And does does anybody else have any other questions that legal counsel would like to contribute to? Otherwise, we'll go ahead and take the vote.
I would appreciate
Excuse me. Go ahead.
Whenever you're offering a a motion in the negative, you end up with this double negative situation. And I'm an advocate of the the motion should be to pass. And then if you decide that you don't want it to pass, you vote no. If you want it to pass, you vote yes. Otherwise, I see Councilmember Ward is shaking her head. The issue becomes then if you have a, if the first motion doesn't pass, then you've got to have a second motion. Whereas if you just vote, the the motion just becomes a motion to pass, you vote once. It either passes or it doesn't pass. But under the current circumstances, under the current motion, a yes vote means the motion or the the tax does not pass. A no vote means that we have to take another motion. So a yes would be to vote the motion down or the tax down. A no would be to the motion, and therefore then we would have to have a second motion to approve the tax. And then you can see why the first way is far less complicated than this way. But but either way, it works. Either way, it works. It's just, it's a little confusing.
With that being said, Member Mosley, do you have a question?
No, I was just gonna make a comment, because that's what I was saying is that we never got to answer, ask questions of city manager regarding the recommendation that he had put for, he and staff had put forward. So we still would have to revisit that, correct? And that's where I meant when I said, right, I wanted to discuss what he put and staff put forward first versus us just jumping right to no and then having to discuss that. We've never really discussed what city staff has put forward.
Well, at this stage, correct me if I'm wrong, legal counsel, that we are going to vote and have to come back, depending on the outcome, for another motion to deal with the issue. And if that motion is seconded, then that'll be voted on next. Am I correct?
That's where we are now. That seems to be the easiest way forward and certainly acceptable.
Any other comments? Okay, back then to the clerk, if you would record the vote.
Voting's in progress. Feel free to mark your votes. Councilmember Lee, how do you vote?
Hello?
We can hear you.
Okay. So I think I followed everything here. So yeah, I will vote yes.
Thank you.
Councilmember Scott? It didn't register your vote.
Thank you. Motion failed. There are five names to announce. Councilmember Kerns, Councilmember Mosley, Councilmember Strazza, Councilmember Hendricks, and Councilmember Scott.
Thank you.
We'll now have to entertain a motion to extend council discussion time so that we can have more discussion and have another vote.
I'll move that we extend council member discussion time by ten minutes?
Second.
Been a motion made and seconded on the floor. A vote? Everyone in favor for that?
All in favor? Hi. Councilmember Lee, how do you vote?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Now, we can move forward. And are there members who would like to have either further discussion or bring forth another motion?
I have a question for city manager and and our finance director. And so you talked a little bit about programs that potentially would be cut. Can you talk about, obviously, you knew that this vote could go either way. Have you thought of which programs could get cut and the impacts that those could have on the city services? You talked about the police department, fire department, and other services.
Sure, so this is, this has been ongoing discussion. You know, originally, we thought we were gonna be facing a a seven million dollar deficit in the next budget, and and we've been talking about that. Fortunately, it's gonna be a lot, we believe, a lot less than that based on the internet sales tax. We have not been targeting any first responders for our attrition process. So all of the FTE positions we've cut, and we've done it through attrition, we have not done layoffs. We've been fortunate to be able to do it that way. All of the FTEs that we have cut have been from kind of back office staff. I will tell you, it is starting to, you know, it is starting to be felt amongst the city staff. If we have to go forward, we will have to, you know, we'll have to get the council involved in that. But we'll have to see how how far do you want those cuts to go in terms of employees? We'll have to have discussions on, do you want to, you know, start to, you know, pull back on programs? Or do you want to start to pull back on, you know, some of the capital projects that we had been planning? So those are all discussions. Scott and his team have actually started the budget process, you know, actually, even though we're months away from it, they have actually started that process. And so if this, these would be conversations that would be ramped up, and we would come back to the council with those proposed cuts.
I guess my other part of my question is, obviously, we know, you talked about the labor cost. But when you talk about capital projects and other things like that, and I think of streetscape, right? Where can we start carving from there? Costs are gonna continue to go up. I'm I'm sure we all agree as well. And so how I view it, and I I'm sure you do too, is that we're right, we're eventually gonna have to address any shortcomings regardless with costs going up, and that could actually increase, and this tax could actually offset that.
Yeah, certainly it could, and and we're not even, so the next phase of the streetscape is is years away. So, you know, how we move forward on potentially phase two, you know, that's that's a conversation for another day. I think as staff, we're more more focused on some of the critical infrastructure projects like the flooding, and how do we get the East Street Basin built? And, you know, we're looking, you know, we're, we've got a a large grant out there that, you know, we we don't know how that will go. But that would go to help fund the actual basins. It's not gonna help us fund the relocation of the Public Works Campus. So, you know, we're gonna have to be able to come up with real money to figure out how to move some of those capital projects forward, similar to the fire station, similar to the police police space needs, similar to their staffing needs. So there is a long list of of needs. And I would say they're not necessarily things that, you know, we're just, you know, bells and whistles that we're wanting to add. And I would also say, as I said before, we are truly, you know, we are looking at where we can cut. And, you know, we've we cut a lot out of the last budget, and the message that we're sending this year as well is, you know, we've got to continue to be as tighten our belts as much as possible. We are not living in an environment where we just have, you know, more money than we know what to do with. I'm not sure we've ever been in that environment. But the message that we are sending is, we have got to tighten our belts as much as we can because we have so many needs right now, and we have such limited revenue. And we realize the property tax is is tough all around the county. And, you know, there's, there's not a good tax out there. And again, you know, it's gonna be the will of the council, but this is a tax that's already in place. And at one percent, when you look at communities and states that have the grocery tax or a tax on groceries, one percent is considered a a pretty nominal amount. And I completely understand, you know, it's regressive and it's it's impactful to people. But it's also gonna be impactful if we have to start cutting services as well. So we're looking at kind of the cost benefit of this. It's a, it's a hard recommendation to make, but we truly believe i- it's gonna be critical for the city to continue with that.
Yeah, a- and I'll just add then that, you know, from my perspective, I am gonna support the continuation of this tax. Obviously, we don't want to come here and say, hey, I'm for taxes, but, you know, we have students here. And I think about a necessity is groceries, right? Regardless, everyone may not drink, everyone may not eat out all the time, right? And so what type of revenue will that introduce? But I had to have my receipt here from, and I do go to the grocery store myself on a weekly basis. And so my bill was just over two hundred dollars. But when it comes to the actual grocery tax, my grocery tax bill is one dollar and eighty-one cents for two hundred and eleven dollars spent. Obviously, there were things outside of groceries, which my wife spent. And so with that, I'm supporting this because I do think we have to, right, take our medicine now, right, and move forward. I'm not saying that this has to be permanent, that we should continue to revisit this. But to take it away could have substantial impacts to us. And and I think we stick with what we know versus what we may speculate.
Members Strazza?
Yeah, I've kind of, I would like to, I know we're in the middle of discussion, but I would like to add a a motion to to this and add an ordinance to this idea. And council, legal council, have to tell me if this is the appropriate way to do this. I want to set the funds aside from what we get from the grocery tax to infrastructure, to the East Street Basin, to focus on roads. That is the idea behind my motion to to have this put aside for that, for infrastructure needs, so we don't use it for other things. Is that something I can make a motion to at least put forth?
That's out of left field for me tonight. I just I wasn't thinking about that. There are very specific, the the ordinance that we that was proposed, very specific language that's been approved throughout the state that complies with the Department of Revenue's requirements for implementing the tax. I don't know that that has to be, and I understand why you
I don't know that that has to be, and I understand why you want to do it. I don't know that that's not, I don't see why you couldn't amend that to to have that a a requirement that that those funds be earmarked for. But I I really would have to research that to to give you a a solid answer.
So that would probably complicate things to get this thing.
My concern would would be, we were just up at the IML conference, there were some discussions held. There are 600 or so, I believe it is, communities across the state of Illinois that have passed this grocery tax. And they have many used exactly this ordinance, the the proposed model ordinance from the IML. The recommendation was stick to the ordinance. And that way that that you won't have any trouble with the Department of Revenue. That might be something that could be addressed easily enough during the budgeting process. But again, I'd have to really do some research on that.
Well, I don't want to complicate or have a problem with the Department of Revenue.
Excuse me, could we not create a dedicated fund? For the revenue, securing the revenue coming in, we're not, we're not changing the revenue part of things. What we're saying is instead of going into the general fund, we could create a dedicated fund using the money for infrastructure needs, capital needs, roads, et cetera, for the city of Bloomington. And certainly, we don't have to spell that out in an ordinance per se tonight, but certainly could be drafted of the money coming in to do exactly that, to dedicate the money towards what we believe is the infrastructure needs in the city.
Yeah, I, if I heard you correctly, you're saying do that without changing the ordinance that you're approving tonight? And if that's the question, I think, yes, absolutely, we can go forward and as part of the budgeting process determine where certain revenues are going. I believe that's something that we could do. Again, I would be more comfortable researching that to make sure that there aren't any caveats in there. But yes, generally, that's my understanding.
But certainly, we've sat through meetings prior to this meeting tonight where other members on this council have made changes to a ordinance that has been proposed before it was voted on. So why would the same not apply to here?
I'm not saying that you can't change the ordinance, you absolutely can if you choose to. What I'm saying is that right now, we know that the way the ordinance is currently worded, we don't expect any difficulty with the Department of Revenue in in implementing this and not having an interruption in the tax. That will probably be the case with the addition, the addition or the amendment that's been proposed. I can't say that with 100% certainty, I just don't know.
Okay, the members?
Do you have your line on, Cody?
No, we're out of time, I'm I'm good.
Is any other members would we like to have more time?
No. I, I, I've got my line on and I would.
I'm sorry, you got?
Yeah, so I'd like two more minutes. If I'd move that we extend discussion for two minutes.
To second it, there's a motion on the floor?
I'll second.
Seconded by member Motney?
All in favor?
Aye.
Councilmember Lee, how do you vote?
Yes.
Thank you.
So I'm, I'm not sure if this is in order because we don't actually have a motion on the floor saying that we move to adopt this resolution. But assuming that that motion is is coming forward momentarily, I would like to also propose an amendment. And my amendment is that we we amend the amount, the percentage to a half a percent instead of 1%. As I've already indicated, I've scratched out $800,000 plus dollars. 800 to $3 million options. It seems to me like, like amending it to a half a percent would be a middle way.
Member Strazza?
I just want to get clarification from council. Ken, I had a motion out there, I didn't, never, we didn't go any further with it. So I'd like to at least have that first before we go with councilmember Ward's amendment of the amendment.
So neither one, that hasn't been seconded, it is on the floor.
Question.
Both motions are on the floor then?
Well.
Mine's on the floor, but no one's picked it.
Yours came first, so if someone seconds that motion, then we'd have to vote on that.
So we have a motion on the floor by member Strazza? And we're now asking if there is a second to that motion?
So.
Comment, I'm sorry, member Scott?
A question, so if if this motion is not seconded, does that mean that we have the opportunity then to, yes, gotcha?
Any other questions from members?
Did we have a second?
Is there a second on the motion? Okay.
Okay.
And that was?
That was to amend the ordinance with the caveat that the funds were earmarked for infrastructure needs. So with no second, that motion fails? And now we have the floor open to another motion?
Okay.
I move that.
Member Ward, I'm sorry.
Thank you, I move that we reduce the amount of the sales tax to 0.5%.
I second that.
Seconded by member Danenberger? Any comments? Then we'll, I'm sorry, member Mosley?
Yeah, I have a comment, right? Two things, I didn't vote for the previous amendment because, one, I didn't want to tie city and city staff hands by allocating for infrastructure and the potential ramifications with the Internal Revenue Service. My question regarding this, does this also fall out of line where you're going to need to research because it doesn't align with the ordinance?
Well, that's, the finance director and I were just having a side conversation over that question exactly, and the answer is, I don't know for sure. I know at this point, we, under the statute, are authorized to continue the 1% grocery tax. And that's what the ordinance before you currently does, whether or not the state Department of Revenue would allow us to institute a half a percent. Seems logical that they would, but I don't know the answer to that, to be honest with you, I haven't looked at it.
All right, so my comment is that I'm not supporting this this motion just because of the fact that, one, it still puts us in a negative situation in what we are currently in, knowing that we're trying to continue the existing sales tax that's in place.
So we're going to?
Unless there's other comments?
Question.
Questions?
Could we not?
I've, I've got a question.
Member Lee?
Yes, so with this tax, if we vote on it tonight, will, will this tax be revisited or is it permanent? And it will just stay in perpetuity? How, how, how is that, how does that work?
Uh, councilmember Lee and to the mayor and the council, this, this tax, like any other tax that's imposed by the city, could be repealed at any time. So now you might have to give a certain amount of notice, but certainly if this council came back and said we like these other options better, this tax could be repealed once those others are adopted.
Okay, thank you.
So it's my understanding that if we don't act on this by the first of October, we're, we're essentially losing the opportunity to keep this tax, is that correct?
So, yes, but we'll also have another opportunity, so, but if we don't act and get this filed before October 1st, then we would lose at least six months of this tax. And we would have to take action again, I think, before April to keep it into effect. So you would lose at least some of the benefit of it, yes.
So my point in asking that is simply to say that if we were to reduce the amount of this tax tonight and or adopt the earlier unseconded motion and city, city staff were to do research and find out that we weren't allowed to do that, we could come back, we have one more meeting before the first of October, and we could address that again, right?
We do not have another meeting before the first of October.
That's right, that's right, okay, never mind.
Okay, so unless there's any other members, let's go back to what the motion is that we have on the floor that I believe has been seconded that we will have to vote on.
Can you please remind me who the seconded was?
Danenberger.
Thank you. Okay.
And for the benefits of members, do we need to revisit what that motion was? Or is everyone understanding? Okay, all right.
Councilmember Lee, how do you vote?
I will vote no.
Thank you. Councilmember Ward, it did not register your vote, but I'm assuming you're voting yes since you were the motioner. Okay. Motion failed. There are seven nays to announce, councilmember Kearns, councilmember Mosley, councilmember Motney, councilmember Strazza, councilmember Hendricks, councilmember Lee, and councilmember Scott. The floor is now open. If we're going to have some more discussion, we're going to need another motion to extend time.
So with that failing, then we go back to, can go back to the original motion on tonight's regular agenda. And if someone wants to make a motion for that?
I move that we approve the motion as requested by city and staff.
Seconded, member Mosley, seconded by member Strazza, who will now proceed with voting for that amendment. Are there any other questions or comments? Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Lee, how do you vote?
I will vote yes.
Thank you.
I don't have anything to vote on, so I'm voting no.
Motion carries, there's three nays to announce, councilmember Motney, councilmember Danenberger, and councilmember Ward.
So the motion passes, motion carries?
Yes.
Well, thank you, we'll move on then to item B under 8B. And that is consideration in action on an ordinance submitting section 7-307 to expand the number of video gaming licenses available in establishments in Bloomington and our city manager, Mr. Jergens.
Thank you again, mayor and council, I'll make this quick, if you can pull up my gaming presentation, go to the next slide. Just a quick overview of what our current fees are. We cannot tax video gaming within the state of Illinois. So you'll see up there, we do have some license fees for different terminals and things like that, but there's no actual tax. There's a state tax of 35%. If you go to the next slide, you'll see that we get 5% of that 35%. So what councilmember Ward was referencing earlier, and we had the chart up there for a little bit, I did not include it in this presentation. Currently, we're getting about 1.4, you know, a little less, you know, a little more in terms of the, that tax is being paid to the state or to the city of Bloomington. Next slide. Wanted to just give an update, this has been an issue we've talked about before. We have sent notice to all of the video gaming establishments that are licensed by the city and shared what our sign regulations are and that they need to get in compliance. And we have actually started now sending inspectors out to them. And so some of the things that we are likely to cite is if they have flags, they're not allowed to. If they have too many window coverings, they're not allowed to. And they can be subject to monetary fines under our sign code. So that is something we're in the process of, of reviewing and we will make sure that we get those issues cleaned up. Next slide. This slide just shows a little bit, since we started this in 2020 or in 2012, you can see that obviously we've had kind of a sharp rise in the number of terminals. That obviously is going to increase as we get more licensees. But the license, number of licensed establishments have actually held pretty steady, steady. In 2019, this council enacted a cap. We had a moratorium for a while and then we came back and we put a cap of 60 in place. That has held steady for a long time. In '21, the council approved language to allow contracted establishments to also have a license that's been used very nominally. So the number of establishments has actually been pretty static throughout this process. Next slide. The proposal on the agenda tonight is to increase the number of licenses from 60 to 75. This is amending section 7307 of the city code. It will clear the waitlist of about 12, assuming that they all, you know, continue to qualify. And then there will be a little cushion and we'll have a round number of about 75 licenses that can be issued out there. Next slide. That was it, actually, so happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Questions from members? Member Hendricks?
Yeah, I'm, I'm going to be super brief because I spoke about this during the committee of the whole. I just want to, you know, I appreciate city staff and I appreciate the mayor. This is something that I started a conversation on in my position two years ago with council. And it's something that I think is important, I think we do need a much larger discussion, as Mr. Dixon brought up, about the cap in general. However, I think this, this moves the needle forward in creating a more fair system within the city of Bloomington. So I would, with that, I would make a motion to approve.
Seconded. Seconded, motion made by member Hendricks, seconded by member Strazza. I believe though that before we vote, member Motney has a question or comment.
Could you put the slide back up that shows the slight dip in 2023? I can just speak to it if it's tough to find this one, it's the graph. So just a few things. There is unambiguous research that supports that video gaming has a disparate income, impact on lower income people. ProPublica, if you haven't had an opportunity to read it, did an extensive study about that. One of the things that has been hypothesized is that with the increase in terminals, we'll just split the pie differently. But that decrease from 23 to 25 of the net amount wagered actually was, you can connect it or correlate it to the decrease in establishments from 62 back to 60. I do think there are a lot of things in this ordinance that need to be looked at in the future. The only other thing I'm, I'm just want to reiterate is since last fall, since the first time we had downtown business owners speak of this, I have asked city staff to audit these. They were previously audited under the prior city manager and a number of licenses were surrendered as a result of that. It's more than just the signage. If you look at the Illinois Video Gaming Act and the state requirements and our requirements, I trust that the audits that are going to be done are more than just a compliance inspection associated with window coverings. Thank you.
Mayor, can I respond? Thank you, member Motney, you bring up a good point. So the, the signage is something separate that we're doing. So every year, under my administration, others, we do an audit every single year and we look specifically at the 50/50 rule amongst other things. We have, and and when I sat in our corporation council seat, we have actually taken licenses away. We've had hearings when people have not been in compliance and we have taken action against license holders. So every year we do an audit. Now, we can do that more regularly under the code, we have just not had the staff resources to do that. But I do want to make sure everybody's aware, every year we do a more formal audit, really has nothing to do with the signage. That's just something separate that we believe we've fallen back a little bit on that we want to get a little bit more aggressive on.
Just to clarify, at least what I've been told in the past when I've asked this question is that that really is a review of documents that are provided as a self audit from the license holder, as opposed to auditing the location for the floor place require, all the other requirements. It's my understanding that hasn't been done since about 2022.
I'm going to ask our clerk's office who handles that to to speak to that, if you would, Amanda.
So just for clarification, you mean having an inspector go in and review the floor plans of each license holder?
I'm talking about all of the requirements that are set forth in the state policy level associated with these. Again, I know this was done at one point in the past because I recall it, you know, I have notes on that, not with me, but this has been something recurrently I've asked. So I, I would appreciate that. So I would appreciate that become a part of the city's standard work as opposed to something that's just done in a reactive way, or in this case, you know, not acted upon in response to the requests that have been made. I just wanna differentiate between a review of the self-audit requirements that the license holder is required to comply with. And, you know, then, you know, but following that up with the review as we should be doing. So we know that, again, in this five-year period, the net terminal income, which equals the amount of the gambling losses over the last five years in this community, was $121,343,000. When we talk about money that could be recirculated into our community, the city manager is correct. You know, the 5% stays here, 30% goes to the state of Illinois. So leaving our community of those gambling losses, $35,451,000 goes to the state. And the city share over that five-year period is $6,104,000. So as I've seen comments online and so forth, that this is a great deal, you know, for the city, for the community. When you factor in the gaming companies' share, more money leaves our community than stays in our community. Thank you.
So to jump back to the annual renewal and, and audit. So we verify a bunch of different things, including their annual revenue that comes in. We check that against the state's revenue to make sure that their self-reporting matches up. We check it against the taxes that we receive on our side, making sure that they don't owe more than a set amount of money to the city, because that's one of the things that's required. And then they are also asked if they have changed anything out of the floor plan. That is not something that I'm aware of, that we go out specifically with inspectors and check. We're trusting that they have, haven't done any changing because our ECD, oh, sorry, our development services department would know because they'd have to have building plans and building permits. But if that's something that's the will of the council, we can most likely do that.
I just recommend, again, reviewing the Illinois Video Gaming Act for all of the specific requirements that exist. And, you know, I think there's an opportunity there as evidenced by what happened the last time the city reviewed it, but thank you.
Any other members with questions? If not, I believe we have a motion on the floor that's been seconded. And Madam Clerk, go ahead and open the roll, please.
The vote is open. Councilmember Lee, how do you vote?
I'll vote yes.
Thank you. Item passes. There are two nays to announce. Councilmember Montney and councilmember Ward.
Thank you. We'll move on then to the next item on the regular agenda, which is 8C. Consideration in action on an ordinance authorized the city manager to enter into and execute short-term sales tax sharing agreements with downtown businesses impacted during Phase 1 of the downtown streetscape project. And with that, we'll have our deputy city manager, Tyus, if you would please, sir.
Sure. Thank you, Mayor. Mayor and council. Before you deny, as great as we know that the streetscape program is going to be, we also know that it's, it's a disruption for downtown businesses. And this item before you is designed to help with that as best we can in line with other things that we've been trying to do. If approved, eligible businesses would be, would receive 50% of the city's share of sales taxes generated by that business so long as construction adjacent to them was happening. As you know, this first phase is happening in stages. And so as those stages happen in front of these businesses, they would be eligible for this rebate. The business shouldn't have any outstanding debts to the city, and the goal would be to pay monthly. But a lot of that will be determined based on how often these businesses are required to report to the state. Businesses at different levels of revenue report at different times. And so we understand that businesses, especially downtown, especially small businesses, sometimes are live, operating on a day-to-day basis, and so we wanna be able to pay as often as we can when we can. We believe that while it's not peanuts, the, the out-of-pocket to the city would be nominal. But the goodwill that this could generate to downtown businesses could be great. And so we would appreciate your consideration and approval.
Thank you. Members of the council with questions? Member Hendricks?
Yeah, not so much a question, just, again, appreciation for working with our downtown business owners, who I know have communicated this to, to the mayor and I and staff repeatedly. I think it shows good faith to those businesses, that we wanna keep those local businesses here and that we recognize the impacts that it's having. So with that, I would motion approval.
So there's been a motion on the floor. Is there a second? Seconded by member Strazza. Madam Clerk, if you'd open the roll. And ask member Lee.
Councilmember Lee, how do you vote?
I'll vote yes.
Thank you. Item passes. There are no nays to announce.
Thank you. Next, we'll move to the finance director's report. Could you go ahead, please? Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor, council, community. Four months in to the fiscal year, 33% of the year. But as I normally say, there's a lot of delay in our financial activity using sales taxes. I like to go through this just so everyone is aware of what we look at from that, that delay from the reporting from the state. So a sale occurs here locally or, or online, if you will. The retailer files the very next month, so that's one month delay. The state takes a month to calculate, and then the very next month, the state remits to us. So we don't see the cash for three months. And then our revenue recognition is even, throws another wrench into it. We, we were only allowed to, via policy, retroactively book revenues 60 days. So we post revenues back two months from the sale that occurred the month before. So we're always on a one-month delay there as far as our recognition, but a three-month delay related to when we get visibility on that. Next slide, please. Having said that, the trends so far, you can see in the year-to-date months collected column. You know, we've two months of home rule and state sales tax. We have received another month this current month, but reflected here as of August 31st. Three months for more, for our normal, what I'll call normal, local business taxes. To highlight the taxes that are getting a lot of discussion now, the home rule and state sales tax. You can see a year-to-date budget variance of nearly 1.1 million for home rule. That's, and if you look over to the right, three columns, $1.2 million ahead of prior year. And then down to state sales tax, $424,000, a year-to-date budget variance. And it's $743,000 over prior year. So these, this is the impact of the online retail legislative change that went into effect January 1st of this year. Been talking about this every month. The city manager mentioned it during the grocery tax presentation. We feel this is going to materially impact, offset, I'll use the word offset, the deficit that we discussed during the budget presentations last spring. Not in its entirety, but it's, it's very good news to date. Kind of, we've been discussing some of the sausage-making, the extrapolation, if you will, of how we can do projections. Sometimes we base those on just, you know, a divide by and then a multiplication. Currently, we are doing the projection of those revenues based on how we're doing to prior year. So taking that and then just multiplying it and seeing where we might end up in the, in the future. It's not a perfect science, but it, it gives us some sense of where we might end up. Unfortunately, the first few months of the variances over prior year had some variability to them, but they've kind of leveled out about 14%, 15% over prior year, which is still a significant boost for the city. Rolling down, the offset to that is the local use tax. So this was the general category where businesses would self-remit taxes or online retailers would not collect our local tax or home rule and just remit, remit the 6.25% to the state. And then we'd receive our prorated version based on per capita. You can see that that's $184,000 under year-to-date. We knew it was gonna be under because we, we had eyes, we had visibility on this legislative change. We did not take this home rule and sales, state sales tax up significantly. We took it up a bit. But you can see over prior year, it's down $547,000. So that's, that's not a difference in sales activity. That's just where the sales taxes are coming in. They are now coming in up in home rule and state sales tax because those online retailers are charging that local component. Last month, I went over replacement tax. I wanna discuss that again. This is down 3.9 million from its height three years ago. The state is doing clawbacks related to overpayments. IML and the Department of Revenue have both come out stating that they see a rebound in replacement tax this year, which should take us back to the prior year. So that should be about our annual budget of 2.6 million. But you can see that the first couple of payments that we received during the year, we are $222,000 under our budget. $252,000 under prior year. So we are looking forward to seeing the October number and see if that rebounds. That would be a nice surprise, I guess, over what we were expecting on replacement tax, which we thought going just from those first two payments was gonna be under at least a half million for the year. But we could be at a break even for that. And then the last revenue category I'll highlight is hotel motel. So we were discussing that a little bit previously. It continues to be strong. It is $100,000 over year-to-date. I asked our, our local tax manager, manager in finance, any feelings for that? We really don't have too many local hotels online right now. So we're still thinking that part of it's like the build-outs at Rivian. Obviously, they're charging more at those hotels and motels, so 6% of a larger number is gonna be a larger tax for the city. But again, $103,000 over year-to-date and $106, almost $107,000 over prior year. So we'll, we'll take that. That looks good. And then variance total year-to-date, just on these categories for major tax revenues, 1.2 million so far. Next slide, please. General fund, expanded the exhibit a little bit this month, putting in some notes. It's still early related to the revenues, but wanted to make some references. You know, we have the prior year-to-date actual column, so comparison between the year-to-date actual. So the notes we have there for intergovernmental, governmental revenue, $147,000 versus last year's $970,000. So that's a grant, grant related to the BCPA utilized for, I believe, roof replacement and maybe HVAC unit. Charges for services, we can have some timing variability in our ambulance revenues, depending on the billing and when we get the information. So you can see that that's way above prior year, 4.4, 5.4 million versus 4.3. But we're not really seeing that much variability in that activity. So that should kind of straighten out as the, as the year progresses. And then miscellaneous revenue, it's another category for grants. Prior year, you can see we have got some sort and fire, fire donations driving that $586,000 versus the $236,000 year-to-date. And last month, I referenced, you know, the first line of that, the use of reserves, 13.5 million, just keeping some visibility on that. We entered the year with about a $3.3 million use of reserves in the budget, primarily related to the front and center project and knowing we were gonna use reserves for that. And then with the council approved the downtown streetscape, which was gonna be utilizing 10.3 million of reserves from the general fund to fund that project. Next slide, please. So most expenses in the general fund are tracking. We are seeing some projects come in over budget in some of the enterprise funds. Some of that inflationary impact is starting to really be reflected now. But these, these expenses are really tracking pretty closely. Again, I'll do just some quick comparisons to prior year. The city manager mentioned, you know, to balance FY26, one of the things we did was we took our average $5 million in equipment needs way down for FY26. We bumped out 3.9 million. Now, for FY25, we had excessive equipment budgeted where we're gonna use reserves. There were some timing issues related to order, front-ending orders for some fire apparatus. Where they're looking at one- to two-year lead times on those now. But you can see we have $175,000 year-to-date, and this time last year was 1.9 million. We have $2.2 million budgeted in the far-left column, and last year, we had 7.3, in FY25, 7.3 million. So we had excess in FY25, but we took that budget way down for FY26 to manage the year, to get some visibility on some of this activity that we're discussing. Other intergovernmental expense, primary driver of this is the public safety pensions. So we, we pay those out into, into separate orgs, into those separate funds. Those are all based on when property tax revenues hit, and then we don't, we don't pay those out until they go before council. So we can have a one-month shift in there, just depending on when council dates land. Because when we're receiving the, the largest of the property tax payments from the county, we could be sending out $2 million to the pension funds based on that activity as their prorated share. So that's what's driving that variability over prior year. And then the transfers out, 11.2 million current year-to-date total versus last year, 7.2. This is related to the downtown streetscape amendment. So the transfer out is the transfer, the 10.3 million transferred to the capital improvement fund related to that, that subsidy we're doing, not subsidy, but that funding of that project. And then under the year-to-date column for FY26, it says audited, beginning fund balance, but we're still, audit's still going on. So that should say, you know, the projected right now, looking around that 40 million. We've been talking about the $40 million ending reserves for the general fund. And then again, we're already looking at using 13 million of that related to front and center in downtown streetscape. Next slide, please. Wrap this up. Enterprise, price funds, I'll go to the bottom first. All the revenues are tracking well. You know, we're, we're four months into the year, that's 33%. You can see across the board, you know, golf in the arena are not the same as the enterprise funds, the other enterprise funds where those are very cyclical, same amount every month, pretty much, really tracking very well. I highlighted last month that the year-to-date actual favorable, unfavorable for water shows $36 million. You know, and that's due to the bond because we use cash accounting for the budgetary process. So we're also showing budgeted capital projects. If you go down a few lines of $21.5 million for water as well. And, and we had, we were kind of in the hole at the end of '25. We decided to delay that bond funding until FY26. So that's gonna backfill some of that, that need as well. So that's why that looks kind of strange at this point in time. And then highlighting golf, positive 546. Now, they're very seasonal, that fund. Fund usually ends up breaking even or losing money. So as, as golf season dwindles here, you'll see that 546 go down. But they're, they're, they're doing well. I'm really happy about the number of rounds and just the popularity of golf in general. Next slide, please. And then, as usual, just reminding the community council that we have all this information online on the finance page. There's the, these reports, all the, the budget presentations from last year, the budget books, et cetera. Take any questions or?
Questions? Member Montney?
Just one quick question. Can you clarify the location of all of these respective reports on the website and the lag time between when you present and when they show up?
So, great question, councilmember Montney. You've asked about the, we have the larger reports, and I, I, that's me. I've been behind. These reports are posted prior to council meetings. So the fine, if you go to the finance page and then budget, and then there's a tile that says other, because there's the first, first few tiles are FY26, budget book one, budget book two. And then if you go other budget reports, it's, it's in there. There's, there's all the old years presentations, but then there's the monthly finance director's report and the, the larger financial reports that are like about 29 pages each.
So I'm on the finance page, so annual budget, bills and payroll, financial statements, arena reports.
Go and click on budget. Somebody look, go in there.
Okay.
And then it's like the bottom right. There should be a tile that says other reports. I'm doing this from memory.
You know, maybe it's just a problem with how it appears on mobile. I don't know.
Fill's going there. So annual budget fill, then scroll down. Budget documents, I guess it's budget documents, excuse me. And then the monthly budget and finance director reports are there. And then all those other years are like all the presentations that, that are done during the, the budget cycle.
Terrific. Thank you.
Yes.
Any other questions or comments from members? Thank you very much for the report. And I think then we will move to the city manager's discussion.
I do not have anything tonight, so keep it short.
Thank you very much. I'd like to yield to any of my members that would like to have a discussion at this point or share anything with council.
I tell you what, I do have, I have one quick positive about that. So I just wanted to say thank you to the city for Grab a Cone with Community Engagement that happened earlier this month. For wards 3, 5, and 9 in Tipton Park, wonderful. It was educational. It was fun. There were snow cones. There was very small and controlled fires for the fire department. Thank you very much. It was, it was very cool. Just big thanks to the city and big thanks to, to those wards for coming out.
Thank you. Member Mosley?
I don't wanna steal your thunder because you may call this out, but I know the mayor, I just saw councilperson. I just saw councilperson Ward and myself, we all attended the NAACP Freedom Fund banquet this week, and that was a great time. So I just want to acknowledge that. Hopefully, I didn't kill your thunder, though.
The whole purpose of you going before the mayor, to get those good details out. Any other members? If not, briefly, there was a number of wonderful events that I tended to have been part of, but one recently, and was brought up somewhat in the finance director's report tonight, in my ride along with the fire department, where we had a number of calls for service, in particular, rescue and the ambulance side of things, and generated quite a lengthy discussion with, with some of our fire personnel on reimbursement rates and truly what's going on when you talk about those finances, Scott, that you were talking about. So it was an eye-opener, to say the least. So with that, it's, any other comments or questions from members? If not, then is there a motion to adjourn?
I'll move that we adjourn.
From member Ward, is there a second?
Second.
Second from member Danenberger. Have, go ahead and take the bite. You got one.
All in favor? Very adjourned.